Good evening, welcome to the Monday, April 17th, 2017 meeting of the Albion City Council. I'd ask that you have any electronic devices or phones to put them on silent. And I'm calling this meeting to order. We observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Domingo, roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Are there any councilmember comments this evening? Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind businesses, since we're really trying to get businesses to come to Albion and be successful here, that there was a bill that was passed in 2014 about businesses hiring convicted felons. They give a $2,500 sign-on bonus and I think it's $25,000 to $27,000 for coverage, like if they steal anything or damage anything. And I just really wanted to put that out there to businesses and people that are having a hard time finding jobs. Hopefully, they're watching or people in the audience can deliver the message to anyone that is going through a hardship like that after they come out of being incarcerated. And this Call of Certificate of Employment that was established through Governor Snyder and he's extended it for four years. You can learn more about it on legislature.michigan.gov. And it's bill number Public Act 359-361 of 2014. It's also located in the oaklandpress.com on their page also. So I'm just hoping that this reaches anyone that is interested in this type of program.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council this evening? Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I, and I'm sure of the other councilmembers here, welcome your comments and your constructive criticism and the involvement of the residents of Albion as it relates to making decisions for the betterment of our city. I expect, and it is your right, to hold each of us accountable for our actions. However, I realize you may not always agree with the decisions made here, but please know those decisions were not made hastily without thought or research. You should demand and receive transparency. And I believe anyone else here is not attempting any type of cover-up to conceal or pull a fast one on the community. We all want to see this community continue to grow and prosper, which is why I ran for this position. I just want to welcome and encourage comments and suggestions and ideas for a better Albion because in the end, we are all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council this evening? Okay. Seeing that, we will move forward with the agenda to presentations. Item A to presentations, an update on the comprehensive plan and redevelopment-ready communities from Danielle Nelson.
All right. Good evening. So the quarterly reports were due for the redevelopment-ready communities program to the EDC. And we're also already one quarter in in terms of our comprehensive plan as well. We approved that three months ago now, so, or four months ago, I'm sorry. So now, looking at that, here's where we're at so far over the past quarter. And we've already made quite a bit of progress, so I just wanted to highlight some of the major points. So business growth and development has been a big focus of council for, not only this council, but the previous one. So the Albion Economic Development Corporation, the new president and CEO, Amy DePraise, has already created a strategic direction. She created that last fall when she came in. And she said that she'll be flushing that out into a full strategic plan for the EDC by the end of September. So it's in the works right now, but obviously, she needs a little more time than just a couple months after just coming on to get that completed. So in addition to that, she's also been very instrumental in starting these small business and entrepreneurial workshops, as well as offering free one-on-one counseling for businesses through the EDC with their partnership with the Small Business Development Council. So delivering municipal services, always trying to figure out how do we make, how do we deliver services to people, as well as make sure that we have good infrastructure and things of that nature, so we can build a capital improvements plan, which you all participated in that process. So it was a long process and we got it done, though. So it was a huge undertaking, so that's a major thing to have done. And then in terms of stabilizing the downtown, there, as we know, there are a number of developments going on in the downtown, both for-profit and nonprofit. The Bohm Theater expanded and they have their second theater now. They were able to fund that through the Patronicity Campaign, which is a crowdfunding source. And then in addition, we have several for-profit developments coming in. We just had Brown's Home Furnishing move-in. There's also, which just happened a little earlier than the Bohm expansion, but for, in terms of nonprofit, you have the Aim Community Thrift Store, for example. So a lot of different things going on right now. In addition to, Amy DePraise also put together a commercial business development process, which outlines the process that businesses have to go through in order to set up shop in Albion, so it just makes the process a little more clear for people who are, you know, don't know how to do things in Albion yet. So the strong K-12 education system was another, well, this was more so focused on the comprehensive plan as opposed to RRC. The rest was RRC, but, so the Marshall Public Schools established a community advisory committee. And then also through, through Marshall Public Schools, students in Albion, if they choose to go to Marshall Public Schools, have the option of the early college program. So students are able to earn their associate's degrees free of charge with their high school graduation as well, by just putting in an extra year. So another major area is improving transportation, which this is something that is definitely, it's moving right now at the county level. We've got a lot going on, so trying to come up with, they approved a study to see how they could create a transportation system throughout the county. And then there are some things that we can do in the meantime, though, in order to improve transportation for residents right now, instead of just waiting for that. So we do have the 2017 MDR Trust Fund grant submitted, so that would be another route that would improve a non-motorized transportation route along Austin Avenue and help draw people into other community assets. And then in addition, our city manager has also, she also has some upcoming meetings with MDOT to identify funding options for public transit system. So the Albion-Marshall Connector, I believe, or the Dial-A-Ride in Marshall is partially funded through MDOT, so if we could try to work with MDOT to create a similar system within Albion, because transportation within Albion has been quite a challenge for people. And as we know, Superior Street construction has begun, because it's going to be messing up people's commutes a little bit. So we also would like to focus on corridor improvements. It's been a major focus of the EDC as well as the city. And so the EDC has identified Eaton and Austin Avenue corridors as a project that they could try to undertake. The MDOT Summer Youth Program is something that the city can partner with the Michigan Department of Transportation to hire high school students for the summer to essentially do highway cleanups or also cleanups along major trunk lines within the city as well. So providing employment for youth, as well as helping to clean up the city. And then again, the MDR Trust Fund Grant that we submitted. So lastly, community health was a focus in the comprehensive plan, though RRC doesn't touch on it. This is a major focus for our community. And the Planning Commission recently approved five community garden applications, so trying to help stabilize neighborhoods while also providing volunteer opportunities and food for people in the community. And then the Rural Healthcare Grant application was submitted to bring the Urgent Care Center to Albion, so that will be moving forward. And the city, of course, gave a letter of support to that. And so that will be a major step forward if that project is able to move forward. So a lot of things in the works right now, and this isn't even everything. This is just some of the major highlights, just to put it out there for the public to see, and also so we can have a conversation about it. Does anybody have any questions?
Could you talk a little about the five community garden applications?
Yeah, so this isn't necessarily my, like, area of expertise, but the Albion Community Gardens is a, they've set up as a 501(c)(3), so they have their own board and they have their own budget processes for doing things. So they've identified five lots where they would like to have community gardens, and they were able to get approval from the Planning Commission to actually put community gardens in there. So they'll be allowed to essentially start breaking ground and putting in some vegetable gardens, fruit trees, things of that neighbor nature, so.
I think there's a part that's from the southern end of Albion Street?
I believe so. I don't remember the exact location of them, but.
And then the other one is like the end lots between, I guess it's bordered by what, Jefferson and State Street, in between, like, end or part.
By Vision of Life, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Vision of Life, actually, they had a large piece, parcel donated to them. And so there was a woodlot there before, and from what I understand, when I was talking with Gwen Tab from Vision of Life, she said that they were working on clearing that woodlot so that they'd actually be able to do a pretty large community garden there, so, and teaching people how to grow their own food, as well as providing food for people.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a couple of questions or concerns, however you want to put it. For the Rural Health Grant Application, with all the cuts that'll be affecting with this administration that's in charge right now, how are we handling the cuts of, like, urban grants and, like, for the urgent care? And if there is being cuts that would affect us, is there a possibility that we can look into a possible facility that may want to, that has the money to build their own and that can come to Albion?
So that's definitely a concern, I think, on everyone's mind right now, though I can't really speak to what the changes will be specifically for Albion in terms of the budget cuts that are being proposed at the federal level. We do know that at least the federal budget cycle is through October 1st. So come October 1st, things might change, but as of right now, trying to, it's definitely a thought on everyone's mind, trying to have a Plan B, I guess. And so to be honest, I'm not totally sure. And really, the budget cuts that are proposed right now are really just proposals, so we'll see what actually happens once it gets through the House and Senate at the federal level.
Oh, go ahead.
And I was reading here, it says, I'm not sure what category it falls under, papers all over the place, but it says utilize Albion College and other institutions of higher education to support college preparation and access, to strengthen the Albion College Access Network. So I was reading over here, like, lead individuals that could possibly help with that. And one person that came to mind about college access and when I think about this, I think about all our kids that are just spread out all over the place and that doesn't have the capability of connecting with Marshall or anything that it has to do over here in Albion, but I do think about the children that are still here and that are transported out of Albion. There's a lady by the name of Nancy Lewis. She does a college access type thing to help kids do that. And she is a resident of Albion. So I was wondering if there was some way that we could possibly partner with her, because I think she knows a lot of kids that aren't, that doesn't go to school in Marshall, but they still live in the Albion area. So maybe that is something that we could just maybe talk with her about and see what's happening with our kids that do attend other schools. Another thing that just came to mind was about, it says, build capacity and a network of organizations and services to address poverty and meet the needs of residents who cannot afford basic services. And I was just wondering that, did we, it's a couple of names on here, but two names that came to mind was the Forks Senior Center, because they do provide meals for seniors that do need help, you know, with that extra meal that they may not be getting. So maybe that's something we could also see what they're doing to try to help with, you know, people that can't afford the basic needs. And also an organization of Double Vision Center, because they do go out in the community and they do connect with low-income and high-risk kids. And they do try to help the families that are in poverty and that try to help meet their needs. And I was just wondering if we had reached out to them to, even though their building may not be open, they still do things in the community to try to help fight these issues. And I was just wondering if we had talked to them, or is anyone willing to talk to them or anything like that? Just some thoughts that just came to mind as I was reading over this. And it's not about managing, it's just about trying to help out.
No, that's exactly, I mean, and the thing is too, is this will be updated and updated every quarter, and so as, we want to see that list grow of all of the organizations and individuals that would like to be at the table and help out with attaining some of these goals, so absolutely, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
We'll move on to presentation item B, Run Albion, presented by Bill Dobbins.
They've been kind enough to offer me assistance with the technology portion, so I appreciate that. So thank you for this time this evening. Wanted to share with you a program that, that actually my family and I have put together. This has been something we've wanted to do for a long time, in conjunction with support from Castor Concepts, Homestead Savings and Loan, and Team One Plastics. And so it's our belief, and has been for a long time, that communities that are active and vibrant and engaged in many ways have running events. And we've tried at times to get a running event started at the Festival of Forks with mixed success. I've been involved with a couple of them, and Amy's been involved with a couple, and we've never really been able to do it at a high level. And so, so we finally decided earlier this spring that we were going to do something that I've wanted to do for a long time, and that's have some high-level running event in the Albion community. And so what we, what we've, we're planning is to put on three races or three events each year for the next three years. That's the commitment that we've made to the management group that we're engaged with. So the overview is three events, as I mentioned. This year, they'll be on May 5th, July 14th, and September 15th. And each event has a subtitle. So the first one is Run the Rock, and for the Albionites and Albion College people, the rock is a particular historical piece of landscape on the Albion College campus that I believe has probably been painted 25,000 times over the last 150 years. I think it was just a small rock when it started, and now it's, it's big. May 5th will be what we call the History Hustle. And so that will highlight certain things that have to do with history in Albion. That will be on July 14th. And then September 15th will be in conjunction with the Forks Event, the Festival of Forks. Each event will include a 5K, a 10K, a fun run, and it was, it's open to all runners and walkers. I assumed when we put on one of these that people would assume that they can, they can walk in this event, but we had some questions early on, so we wanted to make sure that it's open to walkers and runners alike and all abilities. Our goal, as I mentioned, was to create an event that brings individuals and families to Albion. And I, with our work with the, with the swinging at the shell, we realized that events like this take a while to get up and going, and where people anticipate them and look forward to it. So again, the commitment is three years. And my hope, in a bigger scheme of things, is that that person that might not come to Albion comes a couple of times a year and goes like, my gosh, the first time I was here, this was going on, and now this is going on, and then look what's going on now. So, so they, they're going to offer a timeframe to reference the changes that I think are going to happen, are happening, that are going to happen in the next three years in Albion and beyond. Our goal is to highlight features of Albion, the parks, the waterways, the college, and the downtown. Unfortunately, this year, we had hoped that when we, we sort of were brainstorming about this event, that it would start in the downtown and end in the downtown, and that's just not possible this year. And frankly, I'm not getting any younger, so I figured I better start this thing, or I'm not going to get it done anyway. So we hope it'll be some sort of fundraiser for community organizations, and ultimately, we want to promote health and wellness in this community. As I mentioned, we've engaged into a three-year contract with a race management team called Three Disciplines Racing. They manage events across the US. I've had the privilege along the way, and then my, my daughter's done several triathlons and 5Ks and 10Ks, and these guys are awesome. They put on a, on a great show and do it at a very high level. Have over 15 years of experience, and as I mentioned, a three-year commitment to them managing this series over this period of time. This is the course that's been set up for the event this year. And as, I think I can point out easily by going up through this, this will be the start-finish line here, and that actually is in the athletic complex at Albion College. It seemed like, as we looked at different areas to sponsor or to stage this event, that was the one that lent itself in a short timeframe, and the college has been helpful in supporting this event. So if you just bear with me, I'll walk you through this. So we go out of the A Field, and then south on Hannah Street, across the bridge, up to the, up the top of the Victory Park Hill. From there, we turn right onto Haven Road, and then down the hill, and then right onto Veterans Way, and then cross to the Albion River Trail, through Rieger Park, then turn left onto Erie, and right into and through the marketplace, over to Cass Street. Everybody following? Okay, because I get confused. Across the bridge, and then, and then turn right onto Cass Street, across the bridge, and towards the Albion College Campus. Thank you, Andrew. At the corner of Huron Street, the, the race then enters the campus on the diagonal sidewalk, and through the quad, past the rock, and then re-enter Hannah Street, left on Porter Street, to Domingo, right on Erie, back to Hannah, across the railroad tracks. Still with me? And then left onto Farley Drive, and then at some point into the new complex. Now initially, that path shows it coming into the new Champions Field and down the sidewalk there, and we think that has to be changed some as there's a doubleheader baseball game that evening. So all these events are on Friday nights, which is somewhat unusual for these, because most of them are on Saturdays. But we were, we were anxious to try something that's different. And again, whether that's a good decision or not, we will find out. But at 6:30 on Friday nights is each one of those dates. The course will be marked by orange cones, flags, painted markings, and a staff member at each and every course turn. We will avoid minimal, or we will minimize vehicular stoppage along with the intersections and make sure that we warn motorists. Our fundraising targets are, for the first race, the Albion Forks Senior Center, the second one, the Albion Historical Society, and the third one, the Little Lambs of Jesus and the Daycare Center on Darrell Rumpel. Sponsors, as I mentioned, Castor Concepts, Team One Plastics, and Homestead Savings Bank. There's online registration that's live now, and we're anxious to get people to sign up. Again, as I mentioned, it's open to all levels of abilities and talents and physical condition. So that's what we have.
Thank you.
Any questions? Passed around a flyer there. You may see some things in the, around the community. We're anxious to get people out, get involved, and anything that we can do to facilitate that, we're more than happy to do. Cheryl has been extremely supportive and helpful as we've put this together, and we look forward to making this an annual event that, that goes on, events that go long beyond even our three-year commitment, so.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember French.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. This is a great idea. No, I won't be running. My back won't let me, but maybe if there's a wheelchair event.
You can walk, and wheelchairs are fine. You could bring your scooter even.
Have you thought about, I mean, I'm really intrigued by the second race, because it's a historical.
Yes.
Have you already thought about routes and what sort of historical places you were thinking about, aside from obviously, the Historical Society building on Superior Street?
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. So yes, we've given it some thought, and obviously, like most new ideas, it's continually sort of going through it. So, so our idea is that along the race, that there are certain placards that people can sort of take in. Now, obviously, the guy that's trying to set a personal best probably won't pause to take in the finer points of this. On the other hand, for the rest of us, certain features of Albion history that we wanted to highlight was T-ball activity and Jerry Sikarski's work in Victory Park, Mother's Day beginning in Albion, the old rugged cross and the sweetheart of Sigma Chi composed at Albion, Albion and the Great Migration bringing workers to the Malleable Iron Company, and the Purple Gang meeting at the Bohm Theater. So those were some ideas that we wanted to highlight, and we're open to other things that we may want to highlight along this path.
Sweet. Thanks, Bill.
You bet. Thank you.
Are there any other, Councilmember Spicer and the manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Dobbins, for this concept and idea. I think it'd be great. And I want to say that I have, in the past, ran and walked, and I was considering the Run Albion until you said, run up the Victory Park Hill.
It's the street next to the sliding hill, and running is not required. You won't be disqualified if you walk. You can be walking with me.
And you raised an important point, because I too want to participate in the 5K, but, you know, my mind is willing, but my knees are weak. So, but in that vein, we had a conversation just today with Recreation Department and Oak Lawn in terms of their fitness trainers. And we have forged a partnership that will have 5K training available. It won't be in time for the May 5th event, but shortly thereafter, we hope to get it started twice a week. We're looking at Tuesdays and Thursdays evening. So it will be for those who walk, as well as those who are already training to run. So it will have multiple levels of abilities. And I, we're trying to come up with some team names, so for my team, I'm looking at the City Creepers. But I think it's a great opportunity for people of all abilities to participate, and it's a really fun event. It's good for health and wellness, and we want to thank the Dobbins and Castor Concept, Homestead, and Team One for putting this together, and hope to have a very successful event, a series of events, and looking forward to this. very successful event, a ser- series of events, and looking forward to this.
Absolutely. And really, in, in these types of events, success is just go do it, you know? If you get out there and do it, that's a success, so we hope everybody will come out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments.
Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only for three minutes, and we ask that you observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments about this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Uh, we're gonna do these together, items A and B. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and, moved and seconded. Uh, I'll ask, are there any discussions or amendments on that? Councilmember Brown?
Yes, I do have an amendment on the April 3rd meeting minutes. Um, oh, future of agenda items. Councilmember Burns asks for the update from EDC.
Okay, that's on page seven?
Yes.
Are there any other amendments? Okay. Seeing none, uh, please ask for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move forward to, um, items for individual discussion. Agenda item A, request approval for American Legion poppy sales on May 18th, uh, 19th, and 20th, 2017.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
What?
Moved and seconded.
This is just the annual request in regards to their activity and fundraising for poppy sales on the 18th, 19th, and 20th of May.
Okay. Um, seeing no other discussion, um, we'll go for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item B, request approval of the Albion Trust contract. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, I'll allow the Attorney Harkness to just give a update on what's occurred since we last discussed this.
Since the last time that this was at, um, an open council meeting, we had our, uh, bond attorneys over at Miller Cantfield review the trust, and, um, in, in light of existing legislation and case law, uh, their conclusion was that the, the trust is, um, uh, is, is legal in the form that they, that we have presented it. Um, I think based upon our conversations that, that we have with council, council wants to continue it in its current form. The only, um, recommendation made by Miller Cantfield was, um, they have recommended that we limit the term to ten years, because they're construing it as a contract, and we have a charter provision that says city contracts cannot exceed ten at a time. So, we've made that modification, um, page two, number four, we've limited it to ten years, and so, um, in speaking with Tom Leeve, um, my understanding is the last set of bonds that are in the trust will mature in twelve years, so we'll have to do a ten-year term and a two-year term, and then the trust is done.
Are there any other comments from council? Any discussion? Councilmember Brown?
Just a question, uh, Mayor. I know currently there's one trustee, correct? And then two more seats that need to be filled, correct?
Yes.
Is there a timeline for filling those two seats if this is approved today?
What I, what I plan on doing is probably during future agenda items, asking that be posted. Like, I know it's not a board, but like the other boards, and then we'll go through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Um, are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Agenda item C, request, request approval, annual Lions Club White Can sale on May 5th and May 6th of 2017.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Um, just an annual.
Yes.
Fundraiser. Um, is there any discussion, questions, or comments from council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda item D, request approval for American Legion to hold annual Memorial Day Parade.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and seconded. Um, are there any, is there any discussion, questions, or council?
Mayor and council, I just want to point out, um, they have requested to, um, stage in the usual area, just off of Erie Street, and although they indicate proceeding at that point south on Superior Street, I do believe that section is closed, but they can take, um, an alternate street down and come onto Superior at Ash.
Maybe, maybe we can talk about Erie or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we take what I, I guess.
We can.
It's the only one that connects on the east side, unless we go, they start.
Well, we just need your approval. We can work with them on identifying the alternate route.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed with a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's passed. Agenda item E, request approval for Albion Fireworks Committee to use Barnes Park and Riverside Cemetery for the Albion Fireworks viewing on July 3rd, 2017, uh, with a rain date of July 5th, 2017.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion from council? Okay. Uh, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Agenda item F, request approval, resolution number 2017 dash 16, a resolution to approve sending a new police officer to the Police Academy.
So moved.
So this has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna, yeah.
Um, we've gone through a hiring process now for a new public safety officer. Uh, one of the candidates, uh, has no police or fire training, who we are considering. Um, we're still doing background investigations on them, but currently, the young lady that we're looking at is, uh, our top candidate, so I need to request the approval now, as the Police Academy starts, I think, May 5th, and so we have to get this done quickly, so. We, uh, last year's budget came in at $95,000 under budget for public safety, and part of the reason is, is we were short people throughout the year. If I could get all of this incorporated into one year, we wouldn't have been under that far, and we would've used some of that money for that, but because we're into the new budget year, we don't have that money anymore, because it goes into the fund balance at that time, so I'm asking that we use that money, just like we did at the beginning of the year, to pay for this position for training. Um, in normal circumstances, we may be able to find somebody that's through a Police Academy that we were looking for, but there are so many openings in the state right now, it's difficult to find people that are coming out of Police Academy, so.
Is, is the individual someone we had talked to before, or is it just, just, uh?
Is, excuse me?
I'm not asking the person, I'm saying that the, the candidate or the person who was selected, is it person that had been interested before?
Yes, she's applied before.
Okay.
Uh, she actually applied back in the fall. Uh, we looked at her as well. Um, she's actually a, a veteran of the United States Army, um, and so, um, we're very, uh, excited about her coming on board, so.
Is there any amount of years they have to stay in order to?
Um, currently, the contract says that they have to work here for at least three years, or they're required to pay that back. Um, I have heard of recent judicial rulings that say that's illegal and we can't do that, so I can't say positively that's what we, we do, but that's what our contract says currently.
Okay. Are there any other questions from, uh, council? Councilmember Brown?
How many positions are you looking to hire?
Uh, this should be the last one. Officer Decker, uh, put in his retirement, and he'll be retiring on May 4th, um, and so that's the last position that we're replacing. We should have all our positions filled at that point. Um, Deputy Chief Johnson, uh, reached retirement two years ago, so he can choose to leave anytime he wants, um, but other than that, I don't expect any other openings, um, and I don't expect Deputy Chief Johnson to leave this year either, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we will proceed with a roll call vote.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Ah. Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Um, agenda item G, request approval, uh, resolution number twenty-seven, 2017 dash seventeen, a resolution to approve, uh, proposal for small equipment and noxious vegetation, abatement, and mowing bid, and to approve contract for small equipment, uh, noxious vegetation, abatement, and mowing, uh, for Lorkey's mowing. Uh, is, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, do you wanna?
Um, Mayor and council, this is an annual, um, activity that we engage in in terms of hiring, um, the, um, contractors to do these, I guess, smaller and larger properties for the remediation of weeds and debris. So this first one, um, bid, the only bid that we received was from Lorkey's mowing contractor, um, for the small equipment, and that's for the 2017 year.
Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is for, um, taking care of like properties that are, um, that belong to us, that are lighted areas, or something like that?
It could be city-owned properties, but most often what we have are situations in which they are actually privately owned, or owned by some other entity, in which they have not responded to our code enforcement efforts, and then we are, we find it necessary to bring on, um, someone to do that work.
So we don't, our, our, um, city workers don't do it?
Not generally.
Okay, thank you.
I think in, in previous years, we've, we've done this, I think, um, I can't remember the exact height of the grass, but it's, it's.
Twenty-four inches.
Yeah. Um, but once it gets to a point, they come out and do that, so, um, are there any other questions?
Oh, just.
Council, Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. Have we used this company before?
Yes.
Okay.
At least for the last two years that I've been here.
Six years I've been here.
Yeah, we've used.
All right, thank you.
And I believe we went to a, a bid a couple of years ago, and then they were like the, they were like the sole bidder.
And again this year.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
That usually kinda happens.
Great.
Um, if there's no other discussion, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Agenda item H, request approval, resolution number, should be 2017 dash 18, a resolution to approve proposal, uh, for heavy equipment, noxious vegetation, abatement, and mowing bid, and to approve contract with he- uh, for heavy equipment, noxious vegetation, abatement, and mowing, uh, with John J. Hawkins Construction Contractor. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mayor and council, this is similar to our prior discussion, except this is for those, um, situations that require heavier equipment, and the RFP, um, went out, and the only respondent again was the John J. Hawkins Construction Contractor, who was, um, who we have retained, um, last year as well. And I do want to take a moment to thank John Tracy for his work in preparing the RFPs and, um, the packet that is before you today.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Okay. Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Agenda item I, request approval for waiver for first right of refusal on Cowan County foreclosed properties. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I just want.
Uh, Mayor and council, if you recall, it's part of the process when the properties go into foreclosure with the county, they, um, give the city the opportunity, what they call the first right of refusal, relative to these properties, if we want to acquire them ourselves. Uh, one of the stipulations, however, is prior to the first auction, is that they have to be used for a public purpose, and after reviewing these particular properties, there is, there aren't any, um, specific plans relative to future redevelopments that we would want to, um, acquire those properties on, by the city. Um, I do want to note that two of the properties are presently occupied, so, um, unless you thought otherwise, my, my intention would be to advise the county treasurer that we do not want to acquire any of those properties that are listed.
Is there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed with a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Uh, city managers report.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, because I know we have another meeting following this one. I want to remind you that, um, the Planning Commission, um, have a meeting coming up tomorrow on the 18th, and on there will be a, a look at the community gardening ordinance and making some fine tuning to it, um, as we are having applicants come in to make it fit the situation. One of the things that still needs to be resolved is how we handle, um, providing the water and billing for the water for these community organizations, because our ordinances do not permit us to provide, um, that service free of charge. So we're trying to come up with a flat rate, so something that's reasonable, but also allows them to do this really major community service that they're going to be providing. So we're trying to get that, um, as well, and the, um, recommendations for that ordinance will be coming before you as well, after it goes through this Planning Commission. Um, exit issues will be on Friday at the American Legion Hall, 7:30 a.m. I want to remind you that your MML training, uh, with Coco Seaworth, Eleanor Seaworth, will be this Saturday, the 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and that will be here on the second floor. And, um, Sterling Books and Brews was mentioned on May 2nd, they're going to have their official opening. I stopped by Saturday and saw someone in the audience helping them, um, with their refurbishing, so they are accepting volunteers as well, if you wanted to put in an hour or two to help them out, and we're looking forward to that, again, being a great asset in the community. And I think I shared with you a copy of the flyer on the Employer Resource Summit, um, Workforce Assistance, that will be May 17th, 8:00 to 10:30 a.m. at the Luddington Center, um, with Michigan Works Southwest, so we're looking forward to that event in advising, particularly employers, excuse me, I still have some congestion, on the opportunities and, as well as, um, approaches to filling jobs in our community.
Yes. Well, are you?
I just have one more, but I think.
Oh, go ahead. I thought you were done.
I need a break, though.
Oh, okay. Um, are you planning on talking about the march on Saturday next?
No.
Okay. Do you want me to leave?
And then, um, so my last item, I, I do want to mention that on Wednesday evening, um, there will be a Night of the Stars, a Star Commune, and I'm very honored to be one of the people being recognized that evening, so I'll see many of you there.
Great. Great. Thanks. Uh, future agenda items, so you, do you?
I, I, I was going to defer to our city manager regarding, um, Saturday is Earth Day, um, and our city manager was approached by, uh, uh, someone, uh, who works for a large pharmaceutical company in the San Francisco Bay Area, who's married to an Albion alum. Uh, Earth Day in Washington, D.C., there'll be a March for Science, uh, much like the Women's March, this is a march against, uh, current leadership's, uh, views toward science and climate change, et cetera, uh, and so there is going to be a much, much smaller version of that March for Science, uh, in Albion on Saturday at 1:00. It'll start in front of Baldwin Hall, and then, uh, march through, uh, town, uh, a bit, uh, and then return, um, so if anyone is interested in supporting science and science initiatives in the United States, uh, you are welcome to attend that event.
Thank you. Uh, future agenda, future agenda items, Councilmember Burns?
The Albion Malleable Irons by Albion Street.
Okay. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilman Lawler?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of concerns about what happened to the, the water last week. Would Jim Letterson be available to just kind of come and clear some things up?
Okay. Okay. Oh, Councilman Brown?
Yes. We, we talked last meeting about the quarterly updates from EDC. Is that something that could possibly start, happen soon?
They're on the May 1st agenda.
A May, okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other future agenda items? Councilman Barnes?
I need to ask a question because if they're going to come on May 1st, I might can just wait. Give my question to EDC then, or I can present them to council, the information I received, turning that side. I don't want to give them both separately. Oh, yeah, me, that's the council. I met with an investor.
Okay. Are there any other future agenda items? I'll just add one relative to the trust, just to have a, a posting for that. And I'll get, with the management clerk regarding, I guess, the timing for that, just to get that going so we can have a full complement with trustees. Okay, everyone's here. Public comment, public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. And we ask for proper decorum. Are there any public comments? Oh, and please state your name and address.
Nidia Wolf, 409 Irwin Ave. Excuse me. I am chairperson for the Albion Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And coming up on Saturday, April 29th, is the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. That is again Saturday, April 29th, and it will be held at Family Fair here in Albion. And we will have an officer there taking drugs back between 10, 10 a.m. and 2 p.m. So we want everybody in Albion to clean out their medicine cabinets. Any old, unused, expired drugs, we want them. We want you to bring them into the Family Fair that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any...
Mike Bearman, 1101 629 Mile Road. Councilman Lawler, I have to commend you for bringing up the different programs that they have for, oh, job opportunities for people coming out of the jails and that sort of thing. If you want to know any of those programs, get ahold of Michigan Work Southwest. They are up on all of those programs and work very well with them. I happened to be on the workforce development board, and we were looking at the unemployment for the area. And we're right around about five, 5.1, 5.2 percent, which is real good. Albion's running at about 11 percent. Why? These are things that you guys really are going to have to deal with and find a way to help us out with them. Because there are lots of jobs out there. We've got to find a way of getting the people out there to go to be part of those jobs. Coldwater right now is building a huge apartment complex because they can't find enough employees. So therefore, it wouldn't take much for us to put a couple buses on the road to get down there because they run only one shift. So therefore, we need to be working on that. And then the other part that I wanted to talk about for just a second is, in Maringo, at the Township Hall, we are having a meeting tomorrow night on the trail from Albion to Marshall, the bicycle trail. Come out, support us, because this is something very needed for all of us. So we are putting that together all the way across from Albion to Marshall, and it will attach to the one that you're taking out to the edge of the city limits. It's the next step, so.
Councilman Brown?
Yes, Mr. Bearman, what's the time and location of that meeting tomorrow?
Maringo Hall, and it's at 7:00. But we, we've got a lot of things going on with workforce development, and your city managers brought up a very good one. That's coming up very soon.
Bill Dobbinson, 15901 East Michigan Avenue. This may be repetitious because I know Cheryl's working on it and probably the mayor's working on it also. But I would strongly encourage council on this subject, that we, we have a tremendous project going on in the main street. Unfortunately, the upgrade of the water system to the building seems to be that it hasn't been in the plan. There was, there was plans to replace the present service to the buildings. But if we really believe in what, what can happen in this city over the next 10 years, we should be planning that infrastructure to meet those needs. So if we assume that every one of these buildings downtown is going to have an apartment above it, and people in apartments these days expect dishwashers, and they expect showers, and they expect all that sort of thing, we need to make sure the water's service to these buildings are such that we aren't digging up the street in the next two or three or four years. Because that certainly will lead to deterioration of a beautiful street and a tremendous investment. So I know there's been conversations about it and discussions, but I just see it as a, as a tremendous opportunity because whether you're putting in a, a one-inch pipe or a two-inch pipe right now, the cost is just the pipe because it's all going to be excavated. And, and they're going to put in a new one-inch pipe if we don't ask them to say, hey, plan on increased water service. And certainly from the city, you sell water, so you want to sell more water. And, and this is the way to do it without tearing up your downtown street. So like I say, at, at the risk of being repetitious because I know what's going on, maybe the council is fully aware of, of the discussions that are going on. If you're not, please find out what's going on and, and, because I think it's something we need to support. And unfortunately, the timeline is very short, and I don't even know that it can happen. I know we've made a request into the Peabody Building to increase it because we, we're required to have a fire suppression in those buildings, which obviously take an increase in service. And if we want fire suppression in, in, in all these buildings at some point, again, it's going to require service that's going to meet those needs. So again, hopefully I'm not repetitious, but find out what's going on and support it because I think it's a key thing to, to improve the downtown. Somebody mentioned to me that, actually Bruce did, that when they had to increase services in buildings in Mason, the cost was about $25,000 that had added to the project to go back and then, and then put in increased service. So now's the time to do it, and there's going to be a lot of stuff happening in the next 10 years in downtown Albion. We all believe that. So we got to start planning for it today. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Yes. How you doing? Oh, no problem. Yeah.